Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission for August 4, 2022. It is 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Party of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, in which we are a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. John, call the wall, starting on my right.
Mike Smiglino, open it.
Ryan Condon, Commissioner.
Ian Ambrose, Commissioner.
Robert Wessling, Commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, Ultimate Commissioner.
Rick Schultz, Town Planner.
Sarah Stroud, Recording Secretary.
Okay, and to seat one Commissioner?
Yes, and that will be Dominic.
Okay, General Commissioner Smiglino will be seated. At this time, we'll have general public participation. If there are any members of the public here tonight who'd like to bring anything to the attention of the Commission, or has any, have any questions of the Commission on any matters not before the Commission, please make yourselves known. Anyone here in the audience, raise your hand. Anyone online, please raise your hand. Seeing none, then we'll go ahead into public hearings. The first public hearing, EFP 2022-01, file 108909 Main Street, has been continued by request of the applicant to the meeting of September the 1st, 2022. Moving on to the second public hearing, CA 2022-2. We did notices, Ryan.
Should I read them both, or do we want to do one at a time?
They're separate, yeah.
Separate. Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing to be held August 4, 2022. In accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, August 4, 2022, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting. And with in-person attendees located in Monroe Town Hall, Council Chamber, 7 Van Hill Road. ZZA 2022-02, file number 1022D, 246 Main Street, zone change application for B2 to I2 to allow for the expansion of an existing industrial and manufacturing use and site improvements to the building located at 246 Main Street. Assessors map, 026 lot 017, DG Commercial LLC, owner Jay Edwards and Associates representative. Notice was published twice in voices on Wednesday, July 20, 2022, and July 27, 2022.
Thank you, Commissioner Condon. Rick, do you have the exhibits?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, exhibit one is the petition by the applicant, and exhibit number two are the notices to the abiding property owners. That is all.
Okay, and who do we have for the applicant tonight?
Mr. Chairman, it's Dave Bjorklund for Jay Edwards and Associates to speak on behalf of the change of zone application.
Hey, go ahead.
Thank you. This is really a change of zone that's necessitated by an expansion of the existing use. This is on behalf of the Sippen family and Biomarics. Biomarics is the successor corporation to Northeast Laser. And probably about 10 years ago, the Commission addressed the occupancy of Northeast Laser in this facility and permitted an expansion of their manufacturing operation to 80% of the building. And it was made, it was a special text amendment to allow biometrics to exist in the building as a manufacturing facility. I'm going to just stop here for a second. I am, where I am, we're having a very severe thunderstorm, so you may hear some thunder. Yeah. And so, as a result of Biomarics taking the entire building now and occupying the entire facility, the 80% occupancy for a manufacturing facility no longer worked, and that's why we have come forward to the Commission tonight, seeking a change of zone to the, so that Biomarics can occupy the entire building. And that really works when we change the zone from the existing B2 zone to the D1 zone. It's really something that's just necessitated by their occupying the entire building. Northeast Laser has been a, has been in town for 30 years. They have just shown continued growth over the years. They're one of Monroe's leading employers now. They have people operating on free shifts at the facility, and they continue to need more space, and this is just another application going forward to provide Biomarics, you know, formerly Northeast Laser, with a bigger footprint in Monroe. So there's no, no change in the building size, no change in the parking. This is just something that's being requested because of the change of use, under the zoning regulations. I'll be glad to answer any questions with regards to this.
Thank you, Mr. Bjorklund. We'll go first to the Commissioners, starting on my right. Are there any questions on this zone change? We also have an SEP pertaining to this property to follow, so this is pretty much just the zone change. Do you have any questions?
So it's just an expansion and not, not any change in what you're actually doing? Is that what you're saying?
Exactly. What, there's, instead of 80% of the building being utilized for manufacturing, 100% of the building is going to be used for manufacturing and office.
Thank you.
No questions?
What's the closest eye we have to there? Rick, you know?
Oh, it's, aren't two lots down south, just south of it, yeah, as the chairman indicated.
Is it? Do we have a map on that?
Yep. It's not in your package?
I see it in there.
Yeah.
I looked for it.
There, there is a change of zone.
I can't. I have mine.
You have it, Mike?
I didn't see it. I have a guy there. It's actually two.
To the south is 234 Main Street, which is what everybody's familiar with as the Sippen Oil Facility. And then just immediately south of that is a parcel zone D1, which is also owned by the Sippen's.
It's not developed.
Yeah.
We're going to just take this one and change it tonight?
All right. That's the proposal.
We're going to take the whole thing to that, the whole thing. Because Biomarics is occupying the whole facility. But we're only going to change the one lot, 5.75 acres. We're not going to incorporate all these together?
We'll talk about that on the 29th.
You know, I'm a little confused here. So, at this point, I guess questions for Rick. B2, you could only allow up to 80% manufacturing.
Manufacturing, right.
So I'm a little confused with that. I don't have.
It evolves like that.
Right. How many employees currently, before this change?
I don't, I don't have that number. However, one of the principals of Biomarics, I believe, is in the audience, and perhaps he can.
Right up to the mic. Run up and introduce yourself.
Just take your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, it's Tom Hett, 37 County, Monroe, Connecticut. I'm one of the principals of the, of Northeast Laser, and now of Biomarics.
How many employees do you have at this point?
About 150.
And how many projected?
Um, I believe we were going to go to 200, 250, something like that. I think there's an o- o- limit, 400 if I'm not mistaken, so, but I don't think we're going to get right there.
Around two-thirds of the maximum.
Yep.
And that's all I have.
Thank you.
No questions.
Anything from staff, Rick?
No, Mr. Chairman, no.
All right, then we're going to go to the public. Is there anybody here in the room that has any questions? Yes, please come forward, say your name and address for the record.
Kathy Lindstrom, Guinea Road, Monroe. I have, well, a couple of questions. Because Monroe has grown rather unplanned for many, many years, and ended up with a situation like this, where we have a building that doesn't really conform. It used to be retail, and we're trying, we're always trying to make things right, or make things better, but I just, you know, hesitate, not because they shouldn't have more space, but I am concerned that we are going to be still inching along and making changes that don't necessarily reflect.
I'm calling Jason right now.
Think he thinks he's muted.
Muted, Dave.
Yeah, you're not muted, Dave.
Anyway, and then the other thing I wanted to mention was, I'm just reading today about how the intense heat situation all over the world, and what different cities and different places are.
Dave, you're not muted.
He muted us.
Yeah, he muted us, but I don't think he muted himself.
Anyway, and so one of the main things that different cities, different countries, and also in the US are doing, are planting more and more trees. They discover that if you plant lots of trees in parking lots and on cityscapes and highways, it can reduce the temperature by five or 10 degrees. So I would like to recommend that in this parking lot, implant more trees, a big expanse of blacktop. Number one, it would look nice. I'm not talking about landscape bushes necessarily, because I saw the landscape, and that looked fine, but I think having more trees, twisting the ground, will be really, you know, your parents, but also. That would be something.
Thank you, Mrs. Lindstrom. So any other members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application? Any members of the public online that would like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll go back to you, Mr. Bjorklund.
Okay, let me unmute him.
Mr. Bjorklund?
He's muted.
I'll take it.
Now it's Karen.
Is he there?
The most powerful.
All right.
Ah.
Try to answer.
Sure. Like to close the hearing? Do you have any else to add, or would you like to close the hearing? Do you want to continue the hearing? What would you like to do?
I think we're good to go ahead and close.
Then we'll close the hearing. And we'll move right along to our next public hearing, SCP 2020-04-A1. Condon, you have the notice.
Planning and zoning, Monro, Connecticut, notice of public hearing to be held August 4, 2022. In accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, August 4, 2022, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting and attendees located in Monroe Town Hall. SCP 2020-04-A1, file number 1624A, 246 Main Street, permanent approval amendment modification for expansion of existing use within existing building and minor exterior improvements to the building located at 246 Main Street, Biometrics, NLE, testers map, oh, zero, sorry, 026, lot 017, DG Commercial LLC, owner Jay Edwards and Associates representative. Notice was published in the Connecticut Post twice, Thursday, July 21 and July 28.
Thank you, Commissioner Condon. Rick, do you have the exhibits?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, exhibit number one, Town Engineer, report dated July 25, 22. Exhibit number two, additional revised copies from the applicant dated 8/22. Exhibit number three, Engineering's bond estimate dated August 3. And exhibit number four, the Architectural Review Board letter dated August 3 as well. That is all.
Okay. And for the applicant, I imagine we have Bjorklund or?
He's offline, so Jason Edwards, Jay Edwards Associates, 27.
Yeah, let me share.
So this, is that on, is that my turn? Hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the existing condition survey that, you know, just gives you an overview of the site. The main building is here, the parking area, existing parking lot in front, as well as existing parking rear, driveway throughout the building. There's really no substantial changes to the footprint of the building at all. We are only proposing some architectural improvements, I guess, to the exterior, which I'll ask the architect to discuss. You know, the exterior changes are risen through some modifications to the parking islands and some upgrades of the existing parking lot to meet ADA standards that were requested by Town Engineers. So that's really what we show here. We're showing some planters along the edge, and the expansion of the building is essentially limited to this vestibule in the front, around the front of the building. And I believe there's a roof overhead that's going to be extended in the rear. But from an overall standpoint, really, the footprint of the building is essentially staying the same. I believe Blake Leonard, the architect of the project, is taking this to the building. Blake, are you on?
Hi, team. Blake Leonard here.
Blake.
Just, just to confirm, I'm not the architect on the project, but myself and Brian are on the architectural and engineering team. Brian should be able to give some guidance on this plan we have here.
In the group, as Blake said, what we're doing with Biomarics is we're taking the front portion of the building. Right now Biomarics is, I can buy the left side of the building. There was a liquor store in the second bay, a mall toss in the third bay, and ferocious in the right-hand side. We're taking over Biomarics, taking over that space. We're going to turn the, that front section into business use, now offices. So the office will be in the first, second, and third bay, the fourth bay returning to cafeteria for staff. On the front, the middle, right now, the enter Biomarics is on the entrance on the far left. We'll bring that entrance into the center of the building, into the main lobby. Oh, thank you. Let me just go over to you. So you see here in the center, we're going to bring the entrance into the middle of the building. We're going to add some architectural elements. Right now, the building is half CMU, the top half, and then a plating, a second half. It's an older building, it's definitely showing its age. So we're going to bring in some curtain wall in the front, a vestibule for the entrance. That will be open to a two-story lobby from the floor of the deck for the lobby. And the office is on the first floor, office on the second floor. To the left of the curtain wall, we're going to add a architectural element, bringing in what we call an affair, just to give this architectural element some depth and a vertical look to it. We're going to reface the whole entire front of the building with ephes, a stucco, so the bottom half painted blue and the top half painted tan. Down the right side, on the southern side, we're also going to be refacing that with ephes as well, protect it from the weather. Rear end, left side of the building, paint, because that does open the road. On the cafeteria side, the front cafeteria, we're actually adding a patio out front to allow employees to eat outside, and add some planters for the patio, prevent from traffic. We'll be redoing the roof, that's something, what, James coming in? And that's about it. Yeah, there should be some ratings there. You see the ratings there? Ice blue and the tan above. We're adding some windows, trying to bring in light to catch into the building for the business space.
I see some trees there. Are you adding some trees?
Yes, we're adding some landscaping, some trees in the front. Per recommendation, A R B, we're going to add some plantings in the front, as Ambrose and Gage are part of excellence. Anybody have any questions?
Is that the extent of the presentation?
Yeah, I think it's pretty straightforward. I don't think there's anything else that we have to.
All right, then we'll go to the Commissioners for questions, starting on my right.
No questions.
Any landscaping happening in front of the parking lot? I believe it's like a grassy area between the parking lot.
Yeah, we're going to add some, some shrubs and trees right in front. You'll see down here. We add some plantings, we add some.
That's it. There's already a second floor in that building already? You're adding a second floor?
So right now, on the left side of the building, where Biomarics is occupied now, we do have a second floor, the exact office.
Second floor.
We're going to add a second floor in the second, third bay, and up the six thousand square feet.
You added another 6,000 to that building?
Correct.
And then the landscaping plan here, you only have two trees up in front with the grass lawn areas.
Which area are you referring?
Up in the front here, where it says existing lawn, you have two.
Well, we can't go beyond the, that's the highway line, so we can't go beyond there with the two, whatever those trees are.
I don't think that's the side I'm looking after.
These plans are different than that.
Yeah, these plans are totally different than you turned in, than what you have up there.
Which will be done?
Um, June 8?
We have a revision 770, we have any comments? Any comments today?
The July.
I think we responded to A R B comments to add some additional trees.
So this is the update in four?
This is the update.
So there's five trees.
Any plans?
Of six.
I don't have that one.
Which one?
We don't have that one.
We don't have that one.
We submitted the paper copies possibly this week, so maybe they didn't get to you guys, yes, it would have been last minute.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't see them.
Yeah, they, I think it was only a couple days ago that they got the issue, because we had, we had.
So you changed this, you just did this a couple days ago?
I, well, I believe the landscape plan was done previously, but it may not have done to you guys until, you know, we were waiting on Town Engineer comments, we didn't want to have.
I want to see a landscaping plan that was not approved.
No, looking at it.
I understand that, but it doesn't, I can't go by what we have up there. The other question is, you going to put sidewalks in front of the zone?
That is not planned at this time.
Well, we've been requiring sidewalks.
We would request that possibly the Commission could make it a condition of approval, but the condition being that one, the neighboring property at 195 is developed, that's when the sidewalk will be constructed, since it's common ownership.
What's that one?
I believe the same, you guys own the property next door as well? Which, which property?
354?
I, 195, what they, no, no. That was what you had planned on, was to try to install the walk when 195 is developed, where that is. You say?
I don't see 195.
Is that across the street?
Is that the bar? Across the street, I'm sorry, yes, it's the four across the street. So we would do the, we would ask to do the improved sidewalks at the same time as the development across the street is doing there.
What's across the street? Nothing across.
I think the cross the street is the, the.
Cross the street.
I thought it was across the street.
That's not across the street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Made up.
Mr. Chairman, I'm back.
Okay. I didn't miss you, Dave.
Yeah. We, we are, I, I'm in, I'm in New Hampshire, and we just had one heck of a storm. The, but the gen, the generator finally kicked on, so I'm back.
We're just talking about sidewalks. Commission likes to see sidewalks added.
Yes. And Rick and I had a conversation today that we think that sidewalks make sense if the proposed affordable elderly project at 195 does get constructed, and because that would allow, sidewalk access could be beneficial to the restaurant, that's a Sippen property to the north. However, if that doesn't get constructed, we were discussing, there's an existing policy in, in the city of Milford where there is a condition that if sidewalks are needed in the future, which I think fits this case perfectly, the Commission would condition it as a part of approval, and say that the, that project at 195 does get constructed in the future, that we would come back to the Commission and discuss the construction of the sidewalks, which would also entail a conversation with the state of Connecticut, because as you look at the map, the state of Connecticut owns the land on which the sidewalk would be constructed. So that, and I discussed this with Mr. Sippen earlier today, and he's agreeable to a condition that if sidewalks are needed in the future, that he would agree to that going forward. But to construct a sidewalk today, I don't think makes, you know, to the south, if you look at how development is, immediately to the south of 200 Main Street, there's an area owned by the Aquarian Water Company that will never be developed. The wetlands come right up within 10 feet of the edge of the highway. And going to the north, again, the water company owns land all the way up, almost to Stepney Green, and in some cases on both sides of the road. So I, I think we're, we're not disagreeing that a sidewalk may be needed here sometime in the future, but that I, I think we, rather than running out and just building a sidewalk to nowhere, let's put it on hold and revisit it with future land use.
You're agreeing to a, as a condition of approval to put sidewalks in at the time that the senior housing is built?
Yes.
How would I understand?
Yes.
Okay. And that will go all the way up on both properties, or just in front of this property? Up to the restaurant, were you saying?
No, we, well, we don't own, the, the next property to the north, the Sippen's do own. Then there's a property which is where the auto body shop is, used car lot, that we don't control. So, but we, we would be willing to construct the sidewalk, you know, from across this frontage, across the next frontage, and, you know, that would get people very close to the, the restaurant.
That sounds reasonable to me. I don't know, Commissioner Ambrose?
I don't.
That was my only question as well.
You want?
Well, I don't feel like I want to hold the project up because of sidewalks, but I also don't see how one ninety-five Main Street has any bearing on the sidewalks. No, I don't want to encourage the elderly to be crossing Main Street. I don't think that would be very smart, but to me, it's, I don't feel like it should hold up the project, but I don't think the one ninety-five Main Street has anything to do with it. And now getting to these trees. How many are we talking about at this point? Six, according to that drawing.
It looks like.
Yes.
Yes, correct.
Okay, and, you know, what type of trees are these and how tall are they going to be when they're planted and how tall a full growth?
Is it the same with, we have more of them?
I believe so, yes. Black gum.
Yeah, the.
Green mountain maple.
The A S is a green, green mountain maple, uh, and that is.
How many maples?
So that's three to three and a half inch caliper. It doesn't have the height, but that's a, you know, it, it planting, that's a pretty good sized tree.
There's three and three maples and you've got two oaks. Same size.
Right. You know, there's there's, there's no vegetation there right now, and I, I agree, I think some planting.
You got to do something there.
Along this area will be a huge plus.
That's what, that, that's what we're saying, but like, we don't have that plan that you turned in. We only see that up on the wall here now. Our landscaping plan that we have is totally different than what's up on that picture.
Right, this, this was done at the recommendation of the A R B, I believe. Uh, they had requested, so we revised the plan and that's what is in front of the commission and we would commit to this this evening.
Put it in as a condition of approval, right, Rick?
Yeah.
That works for me. So where would the sidewalk go? You don't show that on your plan here at all.
No, Scott, Scott recommended in his review of, you know, initially, we got Scott's review last Wednesday. We responded to it immediately yesterday. He got back to us. He was satisfied with all of his requests, but he said that the commission should look at sidewalks, but traditionally a sidewalk would be right off the curb on Main Street. We'd have a three foot setback from the curb, uh, and then we'd have the sidewalk that would run right up, and that, that's a grass area right now. And it, and it would require D O T approval also, because that, that's not our property. That is the right of way for Route twenty-five.
Yeah, that's Jason Edwards for the record. D O T is going to give final location of that, even if we were to show it on here, they would give direction on how it would be placed. It would be subject to whatever they decide.
So Dave, you, you basically don't want to put the sidewalk in. Unless that other property is developed, but I, I don't see, like, even Rob says, I don't see where that comes into play. That property way down the road.
I think if the other property is developed, uh, you know, people may want to get to the restaurant. I also agree with the commissioner's comment about having, you know, this is a fifty-five and older development that's proposed. Do we want to have them crossing twenty-five? There is no opportunity to build a sidewalk up the, on the west side of Route twenty-five. No matter what, we have to have a crossing. And, you know, my office was on Route twenty-five for forty years. And I'll tell you, crossing Route twenty-five is not a straightforward thing. It's difficult. But if the commission, you know, I, I know the commission has a policy of extending sidewalks. I personally, professionally, I don't think it's a good idea here, but if the commission wants it, I think we ought to wait and see how land use develops in the area. Because across the street is all Aquarian, it's all wetlands. Uh, to the south of this, on our side of the street, it's all Aquarian and all wetlands. So we're, we're not going to see any more commercial development in this area to the south, except for one ninety-five. So if the commission wants to take one ninety-five into consideration for the sidewalks, I think we ought to sit and wait and see if it happens. If not, I think this is, and I hate to use this term because it, it's old and it's worn out, but it's going to be a sidewalk to nowhere.
And we required one ninety-five to put theirs in.
Yes, that sidewalk runs.
And they did, and they went through the state and they got approval to put theirs in.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, can I suggest some wording for the commission?
Yes.
Because I had done this, uh, in Shelton. The suggestive language for a condition would read as follows. Demarcate sidewalk location on final plans for the entire frontage of the property with the note sidewalks to be construction, constructed when determined to be appropriate by the Planning and Zoning Commission and subject to D O T approval and to be bonded. Bonded ensures it, unless if you don't want to go to that degree with the bonding, you can, uh, enter into an agreement that goes into the land records. So you can bond for it and they can come back to the commission saying, hey, things have slowed down. You know, can we revisit this, uh, way down the road? Can you release my bond for that part of it? Or the economic development goes quickly and it's a moot point. So you want to show it on the record map, the location, the approximate location, because it is subject, as Dave indicated, to D O T, uh, approval. So it's, it's how far you want to go with it, either bonding or an agreement that's recorded in the land records.
All right, so. But if the agreement, I don't think it needs to be bonded, though.
Your call.
Because it may never be built. Okay, with that.
Yeah, I think the bonding is a bit of an overage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then I don't think we got to Nicole.
I'm not saying, the same comment that as much as I would love a sidewalk, just kind of connects the, all the properties on that side to be able to walk to the restaurant either during or maybe after dinner or after work, um, would be nice and safe. The park, the entrances over there are a little hard to walk by now, but, um, I agree, one ninety-five, unless they put in some kind of crosswalk with a light, which probably isn't going to happen.
No.
I don't think that's really, has any effect on us, to be honest, but I agree with how Rick wrote that out and I agree with that being a bond. Because you're right, if it's never built, then so. That means.
Are we going to write this up then? How are we going to, how are we going to write this up, Rick? We could do a deliberation.
Yes. This is something new for the commission. Uh, we'll, staff will show you some examples.
But I just want to say that I do, really do like the, the new look. I think the building is, I don't want to say it, kind of an eyesore right now. Sorry, um, but I think the, the, the painting and the second level and the windows, you know, and adding that cafeteria for staff and the outdoor area is just a really nice touch. And, you know, thank you for main, remaining in Monroe and using that whole building so we don't have empty storefront where the others who went out, so.
Going to repave this in the front porch or, right?
We're going to have to to some degree, yes.
So you're going to repave it?
I don't know if the entire lot will need, need to be repaved. I have to do an assessment on that and see, but the front area, they're, they're, we're going to have to put in new islands and, uh, and raised, uh, handicaps bases, so that's definitely going to be reworked. I don't know about the entrances. I haven't looked at them myself to know if they're in disrepair or not.
Yeah, change the entrances anyway.
Not planning.
Not planning, but you're not doing it, right?
No, no, we're not. Not as far as the plan is going.
Okay, any other questions from the commissioners before we go?
You got an approval from the Architectural Review Board?
Correct.
Yeah, the commissioners have a copy of you.
Okay, if that will go to the public, are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on the, uh, S E P before us? Any members of the public online, please raise your hand. Yes, please come forward.
Kathy Lindstrom, uh, just looking at my phone, which is very hard to see. It looks like there is actually a sidewalk that goes in front of the car wash. Is that true?
Yes, that was put in.
Okay, so it stops there.
Stops there.
And doesn't go in front of the liquor store and it doesn't go anywhere.
That's right.
So there is sidewalk, there's precedent for sidewalk.
There's always been an attempt to extend.
So I think that's just, I want to call that to everybody's attention, there is precedent in the area.
Thank you, Ms. Lindstrom. Any other members of the public? Uh, if not, then we'll go back to you, Mr. Bjorklund.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our presentation.
Okay, then we'll close this hearing. Moving along on the agenda, we have no. Plans, right? We do have a deliberations on the two applications before us. Open up to deliberations at this time. I'm going to see this. Can participate. All right. Let's do the zoning change first. Um, they're requesting go from D two to an I one. As you see from the map, um, there's an I one, just one lot south, though that is open, that is wetlands. And that's the, will never be developed. It is actually zoned I one.
I'll make a motion to approve zone boundary change, um, Z Z A twenty twenty-two dash zero two, file number one zero two two D.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, staff has provided a resolution as long as you make reference to it. Do you have a?
Yes.
Copy of it?
Have a copy. Have a motion, a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on Z C A twenty, twenty dash oh two. Any further discussion? Oh, yeah, okay. We're doing the zone boundary change now.
Why are we only changing one zone?
No, that was the petition.
I understand. No, I understand why the petition is. And the only reason why we change it to an I was because of occupancy.
That is correct. And, and that should trigger a more comprehensive approach. And I'm going to recommend that we look at that at the subcommittee meeting on the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, because usually if we're going to do something with a zone.
Do a comprehensive one, yes.
I just don't want to look at one piece of the zone. And I understand why we're changing this, but I'm saying that we usually, if we were going to go do this, I think we should have looked at the whole area.
It's just expediting it for them.
Yeah, for them.
But I definitely think the subcommittee should look at it in the future to figure out why, if we really need that eighty percent rule.
Which is true, because then we wouldn't have to do this.
Yeah, it seems ridiculous that we have that stuff, so.
I'm saying we're changing the zone with a time limit for.
Yeah, but it's also brought this to our attention now and hopefully we can.
Right.
Move forward with maybe not having this, have, attack to happen again.
All right, well, that's, that's basically, I mean, that's the only concern I have is this, I don't want to get into spot zone and then start changing the zone. Because then, you know, we set precedents of doing this.
Is there any other discussion? If not, pull the roll, starting on my right.
Maraglino, yes.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Weston, yes.
Okay, that motion passes. The application is approved. Moving along to, uh, S E P twenty twenty dash oh four. We also have a draft that was up before us. Like start any, start discussion?
We have to. We want to deliberate on it?
Yeah, we are deliberating.
I think the real discussion is based around the sidewalks.
Sidewalks and trees. And it's a landscaping plan. Yeah, and I have an issue with the landscaping plan because it's totally different than what we have in this package. It really is. I mean, and if I went off that plan and not saw that plan, I'd be wanting more stuff in front of this building. And so that plan, like, we, we can't even really, we'd have to go look up there little by little to see what's there. But basically the plan was, I had an issue with it when I looked at the plan. Now that plan's totally different, so, I mean, if it, if they said they only had a couple of days to get in there because of Architectural Review Board, they should have, we should have had this wait or brought it with them or something like that, but I, I don't understand why we don't have that.
Are you not comfortable with the clarifications?
I'm, I'm comfortable looking at that plan, but that plan is not in this plan that we're going to.
Lee, that's correct. You know, the commission needs to have it with a, during deliberation.
Yeah, I think what would have happened more naturally, or what should have happened, was that we would have received the plan and looked at it without the trees and we brought, it's, why is Architectural Review Board requesting trees?
No, that's not to approve you, but it's still.
So that's a problem.
But I'm saying to, but they bore it to their attention.
They did, but, you know, we would have, and again, we would have brought it, they would have come back.
But then we would have left the meeting open.
Yes, of course.
Plan. I mean, they basically, I mean, the plan, the first plan they put in there, that, that plan wasn't going to work in the first place.
Yeah.
Because, but, uh, the thing is, is that then they changed it, but we don't even have that. And so, I mean, I understand this is, they want to move their company along here, but you're just going to push things down the road if you don't have the right plan or it's not turned in. But anyway, that's, that's the, so let's go on to the sidewalk.
We can include that in, uh, the, the, um, the approval.
Conditionally is presented.
Presented, yes.
Well, what, what we saw, we don't really have a hard copy of that, right, Rick?
No, but you can put.
No, we're going to put language.
Do we have one in the office? We don't have one.
All right.
We don't have that plan.
Yeah, I think it was submitted, but I, I haven't.
You don't know, you haven't seen it?
Yeah.
Okay, it is submitted?
Yeah, it was, uh, it was definitely submitted to Scott and Sean's minds for review. I don't know if all eleven copies made it to Rick's desk or not, but I know that there was definitely.
So it's in this, it's in our.
In the building.
All right, let's move on to the next part then. You can handle that part, right, Rick?
Yeah.
And the sidewalk, you have language for that as well?
Yeah, we, the commission wants to have it demarcated on the final plans. It'll say approximate location as Dave Bjorklund said, because the, uh, D O T District Three will have the final say on where it goes. And we'll enter into a, an agreement. I'm going to show the commission what other tiles are used for the agreements, okay? And has.
We're going to, we're going to make up an agreement before we vote on this?
Oh, no, it's part of the condition before, before this gets finalized.
We're going to vote on the draft, which anyone.
You're, you're voting on the resolution, but the final plans are going to be signed off by the chairman until all the commissioners see that agreement. This is something that you haven't seen before.
I'm not going to sign off on it until.
That is correct.
Okay, all right.
So you're going to, you're going to start seeing more of that, because obviously you want sidewalks in the appropriate location.
Requiring that, and it's not like that, I'm just like saying that, you know, for this one project, but as project comes along, now we've been requiring to put sidewalks in.
It's in your P O C D.
Over, over the years, everybody said the same thing, they go nowhere, but you keep on saying they go nowhere, then you never get a sidewalk. And then the sidewalks will never go nowhere because of.
The sidewalks really are going nowhere.
They're really, and I understand that right now, but that doesn't mean that Aquarius is not going to sell that property or, or the state's not going to come in and want to do something with the road or redevelop the road, because they've already redeveloped over there already for the water and everything like that. And if there were sidewalks there, like the state put sidewalks in up over here on one eleven, they put sidewalks in, that go nowhere. But the state put them in because eventually wants them to attach so people can walk and, you know, have bike trail, trails and stuff like that. What I'm saying to you is that if we keep saying that they go nowhere, eventually they can go somewhere. Because the state can come in and they have the right, and they can always put in their own sidewalks as they develop the road, or as they change the design of the road, they can do that, because they did it up here. They had, we had a grant for that and they put sidewalks that really go nowhere.
Well, a language should protect us with all this.
Yep.
Is there any other discussion? If not, the chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve S E P dash two zero two zero dash zero four dash A one, file number one six two four A and two forty-six Main Street.
With the noted.
With the condition.
Conditions. Uh, it's a motion.
Second.
Have motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, pull the roll, starting on my. If not, hold the roll, starting on my right.
Mariano, yes. Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes. Westland, yes. Motion passes and the, um, approval, it's approved. Okay, next we have a new application, there's a new application, I think you all got it in your packet. Now, this is the, um, this is informational tonight, multi-age unit restricted development. The 1271.
Okay, that's, uh. Mr. Chairman, did you want to, uh, Jason's here, if you want to give, hear.
Oh, sure, yeah, you, can you give us a brief, uh, preview?
No, verbally.
Verbally, uh, sure, uh, you guys have seen, uh, am I still in public?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is, uh, we brought this in, uh, in fall, late fall, for the, uh, don't change to, to ARR, it's next door to high bed of condos, uh, it's about 15 acres next door there. Um, so we, we have shown you some of the concept plans, the, the, what's coming in with that was a little different. Um, it's 19, uh, detached, two and three bedroom, um, standalone homes, basically. Age restricted, they're all beyond individual setting systems, they're all condominiums. There's a maintenance facility included as well. Um, the original proposal had 27 units that were partially attached and, and partially detached, uh, decided that it's, but the client has decided that they're not going to go with the detached units. So that, that's the gist of it.
We dumped it from 27 to 19?
Yeah.
Why the change, just out of curiosity?
Uh, there was a word was banned for the, the detached units as well. Be attached, to have the mixture of the units. The, the previous had a mixture of detached and attached, and to have the mixture, I guess, is problematic.
Probably expect to see that, um, in September.
Remember?
Yes.
Hey, great.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh, moving along on the correspondence, we're going to have an update tonight from Chris Blowski. Um, however, um, this is the update on the 485 Pepper, I'm 25, Gardner.
They said they were going to beat it.
Yeah, conflict, and they sent one to the letter for the record.
They have, it says here that Kevin has a prior scheduled conflict and Rob is away on vacation, and unfortunately, I, Chris, will not be able to make it. I can say that we have received completed surveys on both parcels and already filed an I, um, wetland commissioner remediation application for 485 Pepper. We will be coming forward with new applications for development on both parcels this month, and can provide another update to the commission at their September meeting. So they're going to have applications for, uh, development. Is that development or for remediation?
No, both, uh, remediation is for the Pepper Street, Garter is for industrial buildings.
Okay, great.
Yeah, on Pepper Street, they already have an approval.
Yeah, we have an approval for the, for the recycling facility.
That's done, that's going nowhere.
At the moment, right, and the issue there is the remediation.
Going nowhere, I, yeah, but there's, yeah, that's right, because we have to remediate over there, but they, they've already, they've also have a cease and desist over there.
Both of them, both sites have ceased and desist.
I know, and nothing's been happening over there at all. I mean, nothing, in fact, it's getting worse.
So you, you're going to hear it all, and then the, the second part?
I don't want to prove anything on that, well, we'll worry when it comes here.
Well, isn't the 485 in the middle of construction now?
No.
They're using it for staging, right?
No, they didn't do anything over there, like, it's, like, they didn't, they're just staying over there. They're using it, it's, no, they're using it, no, they're not using it as staging, they're using it more than stage, they're using it.
Brushing and processing, brushing, and they're not staging angle.
They built that whole wall.
Right.
And if you look behind it, they're constantly working back there.
They filled in the wetlands back there, they're not, believe me, it's not, they're not being, but it's part of the, of the Pepper Street.
No.
Project, they're doing the project.
They're doing the project, but what they're doing on their property has nothing to do with Pepper Street, but what they're doing.
It's gotten worse.
It's gotten worse, it's even, you've been down there? You've been there, what was your last time in?
You sure they're not just pulling up the road and selling it still?
It's horrible, it's, Rick, it is so horrible over there. I can't even stand how those neighbors are flipping out.
They are, people are.
They are.
How have you not gotten yelled at about this? Everybody's yelling at me.
No, I haven't, no. I, I went down there, I went down there. They don't even do anything, it's horrible.
I'm kidding, I'm here now. It's not even, it's not even.
Potential to close it to, except for local traffic, because it is just.
It's not. September is when the, the, the portion of the road that's got to get lowered, September is a good day.
Lowered today.
You better be raising that road.
So what's, yeah, in, in front of, uh, grasshills, it gets lowered.
You see, I understand that, but you see where the dirt is?
Yes.
That road's got to be raised back up. I, I don't understand.
Oh, yeah, that part does, yeah. That part's got to come up.
Do you know why there's no action?
Why are they only doing six, seven hours a day? Why aren't they doing 12 hours?
Well, that was an issue that was addressed today, uh, at Town Hall.
They could be working from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Didn't they have a timeline on this?
Oh, absolutely, and the, the utility companies are on their own schedule.
Yeah.
Are they done with utility work?
Uh, almost, not quite.
What's happening, Rich over there?
But if you.
Yeah, that.
You know, if you can file complaints on the, on the utility company.
If, if nothing happens, though, that's.
I'm just telling you, Rick, it's not getting any better, it's getting.
Oh.
My gym's on the.
It's horrible.
I love driving the ambulance.
So every time I.
Awesome.
You better, you better, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, it's been addressed again today?
Oh, yeah.
Did you say?
Okay, yeah, I wasn't a part of it, but, uh, I, I, I learned from the town engineer.
Because one thing I've noticed, and if I brought to my attention, because it's so bad, we have 18 wheelers now all over town on streets they're not allowed on, that's so you know through trucks, and it's breaking up those roads now. So, you know, I live right off Cutler's, and it's, we hear the brakes all night, and they were in bug hills, suck, they couldn't get down bug hills.
That's why.
So, I.
The other thing is, when that road gets developed, that when they get it developed, I have an issue with it, with the trucks going left down Pepper Street.
Absolutely.
Going to residential, they're going to go down Docky Hollow.
You gotta get them on 25, we gotta try to get them at 25 somehow.
Yeah, because the number, the number has increased tremendously, and they.
But according to the league department, no two trucks does not, that only means, or no two trucks.
Yeah.
Only means that if there's a business in town, then they have a right of way to be on any road, because they're going through to a business.
Okay.
You get no two truck sign, they can't enforce that.
What about a no left-hand turn?
That's what I'm saying, that's what I was talking to Rick about. He said something that, no truck must turn.
About left-hand turn? That's something we could talk about.
That's what I'm saying.
All right.
Take it, uh, let's move on to. That is, that's what we do, we just put a bridge there.
Bridge over the bridge. A bike for the bike.
For the bikes.
A little bike bridge.
Right.
Make it 10 feet. Truck stand under it, it's the solution.
Well, probably would be replacing that with two bikes.
But Mike, August 29th, starting regular.
Let's move on to, uh, there's probably somebody over top with a bike. Subcommittee, we want to do a subcommittee meeting, you said, Rick?
Oh, we got a variety of issues, including what Leon mentioned tonight. We want to revisit the, uh, uh, the detached accessory dwelling unit in the R3, remember we came to consensus? So I, I wanted right regulations on that, and then we got a couple of little things.
Yeah.
So when do you want to make it for?
29th, Monday, 5:30. That's the week before Labor, is that good for us?
That's fine.
Fine for me.
August 29th, 5:30, Monday.
Do you want to do Mondays or Tuesdays?
Monday.
Okay, fine.